To get started, we appreciate you joining us. There'll probably be a few more people trickling in and if you need to leave, of course, feel free. I think everyone in the room is aware of what we have facilities out in the hallway to my right if you need to use them. And please help yourself, choose some coffee, we have pot and juice in the back as well as some desserts, some cupcakes, cookies and brownies from one of our newest Celine businesses. So again, welcome. We appreciate that you took the time out of your schedule to join us and to talk about what qualities and attributes you're looking for in our next police chief. And also what are some of the strengths of the department and what are some of the opportunities in the ensuing years? And I'm very pleased we have Mr. Jim Mercer with us, who is our consultant during this process. The hiring task force, actually had the pleasure of meeting with Jim earlier this afternoon. And Jim, would you bring 30-plus years of executive search experience to the tables at credit? Very good. Working with clients throughout North America. So I'm very pleased to have you with us today. He is going to be facilitating a discussion. The city clerk is going to be the scribe, for lack of a better way to articulate it. And the other thing that I would acknowledge is there are some comment cards in the map. You're welcome to fill those out. You're also welcome to take some home with you, distribute them to friends, neighbors, colleagues, if you think they would like to share a plot or observation about this process. You not leaving anything out? No? Jim, I'm going to turn it over to you. You're welcome to use the microphone if you want.
I think there aren't any of us sitting here or something. Can you hear me?
Okay.
You also have a place in online venue for voting comments as well as additions to the cards.
We can certainly agree with.
We don't have a criminal.
Right. We can do that. Yeah, good suggestion. Yeah. Please, Jim.
My voice kind of whole week today, I think it's a problem around here or something. I live in New Mexico. I mean, it's a different time of problem. But anyway, if you can hear me, okay, I won't use the mic. But if you can't hear me, this is to keep me up. I'll pick up the mic if I need to. Anyway, so I didn't have a chance to listen to you and that's mostly what we want to do tonight is just kind of get your thoughts on, as Angela said earlier, about what you'd like to see in the way of new police characteristics. Anything else kind of to that, like issues you're facing?
I'm going to have you use that.
Okay.
It's very important to say action.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, characteristics you'd like to have us look for in the way of a new chief of police? You know, anything from their experience and skills and abilities to their educational background, certifications, you know, things of that nature. And any issues that you'd like to have me know about because I don't live here. And by the way, I like your city. It's very nice and clean and easy to get around in. And I grew up in a small town in western Oklahoma, smaller than this one, so it doesn't look very good anymore because the economy has kind of taken it down a little bit. But any thoughts that you have, the city clerk is going to write each of the issues on the flip chart up there and then I'll take those with me when I leave tonight, so. Any thoughts you have, any questions you have for me, I'm glad to try to answer them as we go along.
What might be helpful too, Jim, is just raise your hand and Mr. Mercer will call on you. If you want to let him know, let the group know who you are and if you're representing a particular group or organization, that might be helpful as well. We would welcome any thoughts you have.
And I think because there are a fair number of people here in the room that maybe get a thought from each one of you and then move on to the next one and then we'll just keep doing that until we run out of items to talk about. Does that sound okay? Do you want to go first?
I'm going to go first.
Okay. Okay. This is kind of like the army. If you don't say something, I'm going to call on you, so. Yes, sir.
I think when I'm imagining what I want the next chief to look like, there are two things that come to mind ahead. One is Celine's undergone a lot of growth recently and I think we're expecting a lot of growth in the next five years and years. And that's with that growth is coming a increased diversity and a lot of wonderful things that are happening in the city, getting more vibrant. So I think somebody who is maybe been part of, had some experience with change, would kind of change hands and how that happens with the culture is changing, how to fit with a small town and maybe is experiencing those changes and also making some growing needs at the same time. And then the second point that I would make is, I guess personally, I'm interested in somebody who's kind of experienced, has experience enforcing all the light laws. And a personal experience, I have a background as a fire clerk for a long time, which was once coming home in my uniform. This is before the current chief, 12 years ago, pulled over at 2:00 in the morning, nobody out in the road for duty, heat over. And at first I was really surprised after taking eight, even though it's in my uniform and everything, which is totally fine. By the time I got home, I was actually really happy about that. I was happy that I lived in a town that is enforcing those laws, very strictly keeping the streets calm and keeping it a pleasant place to be, to live in, not just to get through quickly. And so I think that's something that has made me fall off personally. And I would personally, I would like to see some of that coming, some of those tiny laws that seem to be meant to increase the following of the people.
Okay. Good. Good. Thank you. Should I give the mic to the people who are?
Why don't we do that? Will you jump over Patty? Do you want to take the mic if you have any comments? And then we'll pass it down to Superintendent Graydon and then we'll just kind of zigzag back and forth here.
Well, I'm Patty Ringe and I'm actually the wife of one of our police officers, so I have a personal interest in what you're looking for in a candidate. We've gone through three changes, so I'm just here to listen. Thanks.
I'm Scott Graydon, superintendent for Slene area schools and I, here tonight, representing, at least you're certainly representing the voice of the, from a school perspective in terms of wanting a chief that partners with the school, certainly, you know, we've had that in the past, I want that to continue, that the relationship that we have with the city of Celine and the city of Celine Police Department is critical to our success and certainly to the, I think the safety and welfare, the majority of our buildings are within the city limits. We do have facilities outside of the city limits now, but that's critical to us in terms of our success. Making sure that our students, our staff and our families feel safe in that regard. I think certainly communication and all the other things that a leader needs to possess are critical moving forward and I encourage them to find someone with experience in that area.
Pass the right part of you this guy.
Hi, I'm resident of Celine. Just four years ago, we moved from California and we're very happy to live here now. It's a wonderful city. And one of the concerns that I have the most is that we are constantly hearing on the news and everywhere else about the importance of the police departments to be trained in mental health issues. I'm a mental health professional myself, so they, it seemed like the cutting and funding, you know, for mental health services is affecting obviously police being the first respondents in, you know, a lot of other issues like suicidal, you know, situations or overdoses and, you know, for the opiate epidemic and that kind of thing. So it seemed like there is more and more often, we see the demand for the police department to be trained in how to respond to those issues. Obviously, it's not expected that they're going to be trained as a mental health professionals, but I think it will be important for them to be trained in some level of sensitivity about how to deal with those issues when they arise in the communities. Fortunately, Celine seems pretty stable in that sense, but we never know. We never know what is going to happen, so for me, it's one of those things. The other aspect that I think is very important and I think echoes a little bit about what they were saying about changing the faces of Celine and the diversity is that I would like to see, you know, a chief that belongs to a minority group, you know, either, you know, any other minority group or that is sensitive also to cultural competency and diversity issues. So me being a minority myself, you know, so I think that is that very, very important, you know, in that sense to have that. So, yes, sir.
I'll go next. I am his partner and we moved here four years ago, but I have a different perspective as well. I, my father purchased a home in Celine about 45 years ago and we recently, we, four years ago, moved into it, so I have a perspective from about 40 years ago when Celine was a very different place. It was a very small town. The only, the major activity was cruising up and down Michigan Avenue. And it has gone through a change in expansion, growth, much like we've talked about already. But echoing some points raised already, I think including that sensitivity to the kind of diversity and changes that are naturally taking place as Celine grows and becomes in some degree an extension of Ann Arbor to many, in many ways, I think it's important that the police chief be very sensitive to the changing culture and face of Celine.
I'm Jack Seo. For any of you who might not know, I have 40-some years' experience in policing, including about 13 years in Celine Police Department. And over that time, I've worked for a lot of police chiefs too, so I've seen a lot of different styles. When I first began in police work, police kind of dictated how things were going to be. The law was written in the book and it was black and white and that's the way it was. And then over the years, it seems like more and more I've heard the phrase that the community pays our wage as police officers. So we really need to listen to the community. I think maybe a little different spin on what these gentlemen were saying, but I've really come to be a real strong adherent to that idea that what you do in the police department needs to be tempered by the tenor of the community. Not that you need to ignore laws that are written, but you need to be very careful in how you administer the police department and in what direction you direct the officers in the enforcement of those laws with a strong flavor of what is the community expects. And when I worked in Ann Arbor for years and years, it cost more for a minor to be in possession of cigarettes than it did for a minor to be in possession of marijuana. And a lot of police officers didn't like that, but it's what the community voted in as a law. So I remember having arguments at that time with some of my bosses about what to do when the hash patch came along. So I think, I think it's really, really, really important, especially the chief executive of the police department, listen to the community, understand the community and try and lead his officers in a way that fits with the community.
So, good evening. My name is Todd Campbell. I'm the city manager here, have the great pleasure and honor of serving here for the last several years. I guess I'll pick on some very, what I believe are basics, certainly integrity, utmost integrity, fairness, even-handed, right? Be steadfast when you need to be, flexible when you can, when you can be, and again, just to be community-minded, part of the community. Again, I think we'll probably hear that, echo that probably all around the room, but I think they need to be part of the very fabric of the community so they understand what the community's desires and needs and wants are, so they can better put their efforts, their resources in the department towards those, so. But again, it's a critical, I mean, I know we'll have plenty of folks that are going to be qualified for the position, but it's critical that we find that right fit for this community and so, so excited about the process.
I'm Bruce Weslick. I'm a downtown resident. I guess my most important thing that I would be interested in is having the qualities of a leader. And those are kind of hard to pin down, but most important for a police chief. And then next to that, being able to deal with the opiate addiction issues, not so much as criminals, but with some, yeah, yeah, know something about the issue.
I'm Lynda Terhar, also downtown resident. And two points I'd like to make. One is that I think the new police chief needs to have the qualities of a mentor. There have been organizational changes in the department over the last number of years and the members of the department have had lots of opportunities to take on new roles and responsibilities and to grow, and I would like to see that continue, very much so. And the other thing is, even though we have, Celine has grown a lot, there is still a sense that, we still have a sense of being a small city. And I would be interested in having a police chief who's willing to be visible in the community as well.
We're kind of ignoring this sort of a room over here. Who wants to open the case?
Girls have anything? No, I'm not going to make them talk. I'm Heidi McClellan, also a downtown resident. And I think utmost, I mean, a lot of the things have already been discussed, but a community-minded leader, I think, is what comes to my mind. You know, someone that can take a problem and look at how to fix it based on what the community's looking for. And then also just a leader who is willing to kind of get down at the level of the community, you know, the level of the community or the people that are underneath him and, you know, do the, do the work that they're doing and learn from what they're doing. And I guess that's it for me right now. Thank you. There's lots of things, but.
Good evening. My name is Scott McClellan. I'm Heidi's husband. I would say a few things. One would be, as a leader of the police force, I would expect it to develop his staff over some period of time and then ultimately down the road, it would be involved in succession planning of some kind. I would add on to what Linda said about being visible. I believe that if they, if you're just taking behind a desk, you're not seeing your constituents regularly and I think that would help a lot if he was very visible and seen by the community. I think, I think that's good for me. Thanks.
Sure. Sure, I could think of somebody. Michael McVeigh. I'm on the school board and 10-year resident here. We've seen a lot of things change in this town over the years and criticisms bubble up and land on the desk of the police chief and I would hope that we have somebody who can understand and see trends, have a sense of changes coming about, coming down the line and being able to be proactive about them, at the same time, leaving his or her ego on the back burner when things come up. When a criticism comes up, it's not about them, it's, it's something that the public is grappling with and dealing with and sometimes the police are the first, well, obviously the first responders or the first, the first in the line to get that, so that's really all I have to say at this point.
My name is Kristin Mitchell. I grew up in this town and I graduated with Mr. Graydon there. He and I are classmates, so it's kind of nice that we serve this town now. I serve on city council and have served on a number of committees over the years. I have two thoughts and one of them is we live in a divisive town and we've had some national news and national events that are troubling and I would like to echo the voices that have spoken for unity. And I want somebody who has the leadership skills to be somebody who can unite our community because when I, when I think of our community, I think of neighbors looking out for one another and helping one another. And I really do think a lot of our police force, I've always had good response from them, whether I was before city council or after. And I guess from wearing my city council hat, I would, we have a consultation group that, that has, you know, several reports and checking in and I would like though, those efforts not to be lost in the transition and whatever lessons or gaps that still need to be addressed, I would like those to be carried through.
Hi, I'm Janet Dillon. I'm a resident and a member of Celine City Council. As far as qualities, I think finding somebody that has a strong and firm leadership is very important. I, and it just sort of trends with what others have said about having mentoring and succession planning in place also. We've had some changes over the years. I don't think that's anything abnormal to other departments, but I want to make sure that our longtime employees still are staying the course and at the same time, we're growing our department. So I think that's really important for the city. I think it's also vitally important that the police chief have strong communication and presence in our community. We're a small town and people are known by faces and, you know, we don't all know each other by name all the time. And so I just think that that's vitally important. I think people are more receptive to the police if they know who they are. And we definitely have that now, so it's something I'd like to have continue on. I also do serve as the chair of our local drug task force and our current chief sits on the task force and he's been very proactive in, in the education, the acknowledgement of drug issues in our community and helping awareness. And so I'd like to make sure that those efforts continue also. And so I think that's about it for right now. Thank you.
I am Matt Dillon. I have no law enforcement experience, either on the right side or fortunately the wrong side of the law, but what I, what I do have experience in is being a citizen here in Celine. We've been here for over 10 years and, you know, I think the big choice in our moving here was, was two things, that it was a safe place to live and to your point, when you opened up, that it's a clean city. You know, our education system, thanks to Mr. Graydon, and our school board is second to none. So the bar here in Celine is, in my opinion, set pretty high and the standards that are set by the mayor, the city manager and so forth, as, you know, Celine officials, you know, I mean, is, is as I said, high. And it really, like I said, the new police chief, whoever that may be, needs to, you know, accept that challenge and, I mean, it's a great community to come in and work in and whether that's, you know, addressing internal or external affairs, it's got to be, you know, to meet that challenge.
Dean Gerbach, member of city council and lifetime resident of Celine. My hope's that in our new leadership, that we would have not only the mentoring, but also to have an ability of negotiating. There's a number of activities and opportunities that which a chief will face in terms of how to settle a solution or even to deal with his own staff and so forth. And because we also deal with unions and other changing things, we need to have someone that has had that experience, understands what that means, to set not only the bar, as Mr. Dillon had mentioned, but to also establish the aspects of being able to work with a community, establish a way of encouraging the community to work towards protecting ourselves. I think a lot of it is developing and training and getting education out to the public about what things can happen, what things can be protected about. The other piece of it with a, the leadership is I want to have an individual that sets the standard. It's really key to have a person that, as the others have said, lives what they walk in the walk of life or whatever and to be able to understand that if there is something wrong and it needs to be addressed, it is addressed at that point in time. There are expectations I think people have with the police force. We know that they're changing. We need to have a positive approach because people feel that at times they may be not looking out for them, but we know they are. But there also has to be that give and take that we have as the public, that we expect to see things occur when they need to occur. And I think that's for me, is going to be the biggest issue of having a chief that's able to accomplish all of those and yet still be somebody that everyone looks up to and doesn't necessarily feel they want to challenge or so forth.
Anybody want to add anything? We can get a couple. We'll start with this gentleman, Jack.
I was just thinking, well, everybody was talking about the, it would be important also for this chief to be a self-advocate for his own staff. I just found out just recently about how much money the police officers in Detroit make and they don't make that much money. I mean, it's, I don't know how much money they make here either, but what I'm thinking is also, I think, police officers are going through a very difficult situation just in general in the country, I think, you know, in the sense of the profession being the value of what they do, how they do it, you know, and what are the standards for, for how they do it. So I think it is important that the chief also advocates for their own staff about, you know, what it would be some venues for them to be able to get, you know, budgetary adjustments to have, you know, some sort of like stepping increases in their salaries so, so they feel, you know, more comfortable not only doing their own, their profession, but also the turnover in the police departments is not as dramatic as it has been in other cities like Detroit or something like that, so that's it. Thank you.
Change the tenor a little bit here. Although it's a small police department, Celine has a lot of technology. They have an AFAS system, the Automated Fingerprint Identification. They have a photo recognition system that's tied into a regional database here in southeastern Michigan. They're of course tied in with all the normal lean and AFAS, or NCIC and those kinds of computerized databases for checking people's records and driving records and criminal history and so on. Also, they're on the cusp of getting the most advanced Motorola radio system that is now being sold and that has a lot of capability. And it's important that, I think, the chief executive understand that capability and advocate for the training of the officers and maintaining their abilities with that kind of a advanced technology. We're on the cusp too of getting a, an enhanced 911 telephone switch here. It'll be a regional phone switch throughout Washtenaw County. So I think it's a chief, we need a chief who understands the modern technology that's being employed by the police and how best to use that and how to employ that in a way that's perhaps resource savvy as well.
Any more else? Judicial comments, thoughts?
I started to sit down at the table. It reminded me of something that happened a couple of years ago, doing a strategic planning session at a city in Virginia.
I'm sorry, let me just take the mic. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you.
Okay. Is that better?
Thank you.
Strategic planning session with the city of Virginia and we were using a brand-new human services building that they just moved into like a week before. And I, somewhere in that process, I sat down in the middle of one of these tables and it collapsed. And the director of that department was in the room and I said, "How much did I owe you?" He said, "Don't worry about it." So anyway, it worked out okay, but the moral of the story is don't sit down in the middle of the table. Anyone else have any comments? Any questions to me about process or how long it takes or anything like our credentials to do this? Yes, ma'am.
Can you walk through the process in your timeframe?
Sure. We're probably looking at like 90 to 120 days to get to, get to a decision point. And what I'm doing right now is collecting information to prepare a position profile and there about a four to six-page document in color they're not looking at, that type of thing. type of thing. And so I should be able to get the, at least the narrative portion of that done in about a week and get it back up to Todd to review, and then the task force that I met with today at noon is going to have to also look at that probably, make sure you're comfortable with, you know, the words I'm putting in there and that I haven't missed something or misconstrued something. And then, along with that, we'll do a timeline. We've already got one together, but we'll probably need to take a look at that again and make sure it reflects exactly what we're going to be doing. It's like a milestone chart, you know, here are the steps, and here are the dates when they need to occur. And then I'll give Todd a, like a one-page strategy. Here's what I'm going to be doing during the actual search process. And then when we get approval of all that, which should happen in about, about ten days from now, then the actual search can start. And we typically run a search for about six weeks, and that'll put us up probably into October sometime. And at that point, well, what I'll be doing during that time is sending out that recruitment brochure along with an invitation letter to several hundred people that I think will either be good sources or possible candidates for the position. And I don't have any preconceived notion about where this person ought to come from. They could be internally here now, or they could be someone, you know, in our surrounding community, or somewhere else in Michigan, or they could be somewhere across the country. But they need to fit, fit the profile and be a good potential fit for this community. And so I doubt that someone coming out of a real large police department would be the right kind of person, but they could be. Kind of depends a little bit on their background and their orientation and, you know, all the things, just tend to that. Once we get a group of candidates together, we'll narrow that down to about twelve to fifteen, and then begin to do interviews with them and background and reference checks, that type of thing, and then go through the process here locally to make sure that the task force is familiar with the candidates and has all the information they need to make a decision. And then we'll get down to the top three candidates and take those to the full city council for them to approve one of them. So the entire process probably will wind up sometime in November, and if the person comes from some other part of the country, they're going to have to give notice and, and, you know, move here and that type of thing, if they're in Washtenaw County or in this region, they might not need to do that right way, or they might... I think that, I'm not sure about the requirement for residency. I think it's not required, but it's because of some Michigan law that the chief and I talked about today. But I think it's preferred. You know, it's always better to have a chief and a city manager who live in the community that they're serving. And so anyway, that's pretty much the process, and I think we're probably looking at more like a hundred and twenty days to get to the decision point. We, the, the timeline that we went over today is a little bit more aggressive than that, which will put us in pretty good shape to, you know, have a decision made sometime in November.
Given that I'm learning there's been some turnover, is not much of this already been done through previous turnover replacements in that candidate process?
In the department.
In the chief's position. I presume there already is a job description? Is that going to be modified to include some of the content raised tonight?
Yes. That's, that's the purpose of us doing this tonight. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for...
Jim, if I could elaborate a little bit on the, the search process and talk briefly about the composition of the, the task force. So four of the members are actually present in the room this evening, including our city manager, Mr. Campbell, council member Jack Seo, Mayor Protem Tuhar, and then myself, and we're joined by, of course, Mr. Mercer, who will be assisting us, and then two additional individuals that come to the table with significant law enforcement experience. The first is Ed Toth, who was raised in Celine, graduated from Celine High School, is currently the chief of police for the city of Chelsea, retired as a Washtenaw County Sheriff's Deputy after twenty-plus years. He actually served on the task force five years ago when we hired our current chief, outstanding individual. And then we are also joined by Marlene Radzik, who is a commander at the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, been with Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office for more than twenty years. Her band position is a high-level position in the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, and interestingly enough, she is a city of Celine resident as well. So again, the breadth and depth of experience and expertise on the hiring task force is pretty exceptional. I like the comment that was made by my friend Matt Dillon. I, I come to the table with zero law enforcement experience, so I value having the perspective of some individuals who have a lot of law enforcement experience and expertise. But like many of you, I'm deeply passionate about our department, the direction of our department, and I want to find an ideal candidate to, to fill the chief's position. The only other thing I would add, or of course, if you have additional comments, you're welcome to connect with the city clerk this evening, and we can put them on our, on our, they're not spreadsheets, but our, our sheets of paper that are now taped to the wall. Or you can fill out a comment card, or as we indicated earlier, something will be online. But I will note for the record that there is great cohesion here, and many issues were mentioned numerous times. So that's great to see a, a pretty broad consensus amongst our community members. So as Jim indicated, this, this information and your insights will be very helpful. It will be added to the job description and the profile. And the only other thing that I would add, and, and Mr. Mercer, you touched on this, is when the task force narrows it down to the three candidates, those three candidates will be forwarded to city council. We are likely to convene a meeting, very similar to what we did five and a half years ago, on a Saturday morning to interview the candidates. That will be open to the public. There will be most likely a meet and greet component, and we welcome your participation as well. That'd be a great way for you to provide additional feedback as we get to the, the goal line, if you pardon the expression. Jim, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, we have one here, what you want.
Oh, yes. Dave, do you have any comments, any thoughts you'd like to add?
This is a conservative.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you for joining us. Mr. Campbell, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. I appreciate you taking everything of your time to come out tonight, and I know that your time is valuable, and we appreciate you placing value on, on this because it's, as I said before, picking the right police chief is just certainly as much important as saying the importance of the chief and our city manager. So thank you for, for contributing and committing your time.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our council colleague Heidi McClellan is celebrating a birthday today. So God bless her for showing up to this forum on her actual birthday. So be sure to wish her a happy birthday. Make sure there's at least a cookie, cupcake, and brownie for her to take with her. Help, help yourself to some more refreshments, and if you'd like to comment further, I'll, I'll stick around, and I'd be happy to, to entertain your thoughts and observations. Thank you. Jim, thank you very much. (applause)